All right, recording started.
We'll think we need name tags even though I made them, sorry.
All right. Hey, everybody, good evening. Like to welcome you to this informal position or meeting for the Planning and Zoning Commission. The idea here is that we want to have a two-way conversation, or at least allow a two-way conversation with questions and concerns about the draft comprehensive plan. And the other hearing, the public hearing actually will start about 6:30 or so, or when the questions are over. That's when the full commission will assemble. And that is a time, it's only a one-way conversation for the public to actually send the comments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We don't get to interact, we can't answer your questions at that time. We just listen, take notes, and take notes of what your concerns and your questions are. So at this time, we do have the option to interact. And if you have questions, you can ask, we can answer because it's an informal thing. So it's something different, it's not required by law. The public hearing is required. This informal thing is just one way, I thought it would be a good way to offer that option to people who can actually ask a question and hopefully get an answer back in a timely manner. Okay? So just a couple of minute history of what's going on here. This is a update to the 2012 comprehensive plan for the village of Campden Hills. This was obviously, well, not obviously 2012 is when it started. We had a grant from CMAP, the Chicago Metropolitan Area Planning. They came in and helped us develop this plan. And since we are a new village. And then about four years later, they wanted to make some changes and thought, or an update the plan, usually updated about every 10 years or so. So they embarked on a plan. Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to ask you to step outside for a minute for the public, for the, make sure we don't have a violation of the Open Meetings Act, just two members. Thanks, Jared, appreciate it. So in about 2016 or so, they started to redo this comprehensive plan and update it again. That process was about nine years in the making and made some progress, but it was extremely slow progress. So some of the situations that happened, like Charles Farm last fall, kind of gave us a re-impetus to really start working on this comprehensive plan and updating it in a more timely manner. And so we said, okay, let's really put some teeth into this thing. Make sure we have what everybody understands is our goals and our vision. And it's not basically a Charles Farm-type subdivision or plan for the Campden Hills. So that's where we are now. So then, beginning of this year, we've been meeting about twice a month trying to update the plans. We have a draft plan right now. And that plan has been posted. And there still are some corrections, some formatting, edits and things like that. But the substance pretty much is all there. So with that, if you have any questions or concerns, please step up to the mic and ask a question. I'll be glad to answer simple questions or difficult questions. Or I just want to make sure it's recorded so people can hear what the question is. So this is just really informal. So if you got a question, go ahead. If not, that's fine, too.
So just for Open Meetings Act purposes, I know we had the rest of the PZC members step out as well, so we just have two here. We shouldn't have more than two village board members here at the same time because it could be considered a meeting of the village board. So if you guys want to, you can have two at a time maybe come in and then the other two can come in. Or, because it looks like you're kind of doing like a two-way conversation from this part.
I would note that administrator actually requested that we come. So.
When the public hearing starts.
For the public hearing?
Yeah, this is just an informal workshop.
It'll be 6:30. Yeah, thank you, Jared.
No, during the public meeting, the, any members of the village board can sit in the, in the audience. They just can't discuss the, the subject of public business.
I'm ready, I can do that. I'll come back and see you.
Absolutely, yeah, we just can't discuss the subjects amongst yourselves when you're sitting in the room. But you can absolutely sit and, and listen, yeah, absolutely.
All right. You're, it looks like you're anxious to ask a question, sir, go ahead. If you would, just state your name for the record, when to get, I'm not sure if that, Mike, thank you.
Tom, Thomas Bihun, B-I-H-U-N.
Oh, hi.
I was wondering, is, in the comprehensive plan, is the proposed commercial, commercial building over on, off of, I think Bochum, I'm not really sure, still in the, in the plan? It was, it was put in there by Patsy Smith. And it calls for a building up of the commercial units down there.
Just to make my clarification, I might, we might be talking about the, the...
You can maybe just wait, I can't hear anything.
Okay. Just, can you close the door, maybe?
You can leave the door open.
Or just, yeah. Yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you. So I think that is, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm assuming that this is the TESCA plan you might be talking about, where there was a public hearing that talked about the town center that talked about, kind of like...
Town, yeah, town center.
Yeah, kind of where the, the roundabout is?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, just basically a little west of that?
Yeah.
So that was, it is, the short answer is yes, it is in the plan. And it's actually, he says it's, it's an option. It doesn't say that this is what we want and this is what we're gonna have. And this is what our plan to do is. It just says that we had a, a meeting with the village, or the village people, residents. We had open house and they came in and they had different plans. And then they all got to pick and vote on which plans they liked the best. Said, well, this is an option. And that was the plan that was included in the current comprehensive plan, which is just being updated. It's gonna remain in there. That still is in there. But it also states in the comprehensive plan that this is not necessarily, it's only an option. It is an option, but it's not necessarily exactly what the village needs to have. Does that answer your question?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Follow-up of that.
Sure.
I am the president of the Wasco sanitary district.
Okay, thank you.
And the plan called, I believe, for the Wasco sanitary district to supply water and take care of their waste. We have no capacity.
Okay, yeah.
So option, an option is, you know, not any water or waste capacity.
Yeah, so it's, it's a great point. And I believe also that that was added into our comp plan about how the limitations of our facilities of wastewater and water. And actually, Jim, I'll give you a floor in a second. And actually, that the village is not really looking to add capacity right now either. So, Jim?
Yeah. The, that, that was recognized when the original plan was put forward. That, you know, the weight sewer and water facilities would have to be resolved before anything could happen. And that, you know, it was noted at the time that the district was out of capacity. So the idea of it was that it's a nice concept. It, it meets the, you know, a lot of the desires and wishes of, you know, the residents of the village. If, if we were to do something, it had the mixed-use potentials. It had, you know, I think, like elder care residential. It had, you know, some parts of it were, you know, single-family residential. So it was a nice mixed-use concept that would fit within the middle of the village. But again, they all recognized that there was a severe limitation based on, you know, sewer and water service. So it serves as an example of how a mixed-use concept could be developed anywhere within the village boundaries. And it would be, you know, it'd meet our goals. But again, it just, there's no way that it could be done without...
Water and sewer.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah. It's just that we have, we have had engineering studies saying that we need 47 more acres of spray fields. Just to be...
Compliant?
Comply, yeah.
With the, with your current capacity?
Right.
Yeah, so you're under, you need more acres just to be...
Correct, we're, 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 every year we're spraying field. Our spray fields are going longer and longer. And to have additional capacity, we need additional spray fields. Our water capacity is fine at this point in time. We have no problem with water capacity. But with wastewater?
Yeah.
The problem is a big one.
Understood, yeah. And I, and I think the whole commission understands that as well, but I appreciate you bringing that up.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, you bet. All right, anybody else with a question or a comment? Or, I don't think they've had a chance to see the plan, it was posted online. But positive, negative, or any other questions? So at the same time, during the hearing, if you'd like to make a comment again at the public hearing, you may come up again and speak at the public hearing and also give your comments as well. That's not a one-time done. You're all more than welcome to make comments at the public hearing. But then again, we just can't interact with you and give you feedback. So you're just more of a one-way concept, so, all right? Any other, any other questions? All right, so... It should be online at the village website. I don't, I don't have a copy of the current, like, electronic version. I don't have, I don't have a paper copy in front of me, but it was online. Yeah. Mark, he was asking if there was a, if there was a paper copy available of the comprehensive plan? Probably not, is there? Do you have one of the draft?
I can print, I can print a couple more.
Gentleman in the back was kind of like one. Do you have one you could just hand him?
I have to...
Print it off?
I have to...
Can you confirm that wasn't, it was posted online?
It was, the appendix, the appendix wasn't...
That, that's something different, we'll get to that, yeah, yeah.
It was a tits-to-the-packet for tonight's meeting.
Yeah. And I have seen it, I've gone online to look it up, it's there, so. Obviously, since there's no other questions...
Do you want to see if the other trustees maybe wanted to switch out if they have questions?
Yeah, that'd be a good idea, yeah. So, no, where are they?
Do you, maybe you want to see if the other trustees want to switch out? That way, if they have any questions, if there are two out there, yeah.
So my, my impression, this is, this is my take on the comprehensive plan. This is a much improved plan. It really is, there's no large changes or modifications in the sense of the context of what we're trying to do. I think the biggest change you'll see is the layout, the format. That looks much different. But actual, what we tried to do was to strengthen the, strengthen the verbiage in the, in the comprehensive plan that talks about what we value the most. I think we value open space, we value, you know, we don't, we value our kind of larger lots and our more, we call it kind of a lifestyle. And so those are the things that we are trying to emphasize and strengthen. So that's kind of where, where we went with, with the changes or edits that we made to it. But there's no wholesale ripping out and changing and taking out a whole concept and then putting a new concept in. It really is just updating the current plan. That's my perspective, so. Could you speak at the speakers? That way, that's recorded and then people can hear you. So, thank you.
Is the Planning and Zoning Commission looking forward because of the new proposed, proposed addition to the village? The 900 homes that the Shodin developer wants to build? Is the Planning and Commission, Zoning Commission, looking and realizing that within this plan?
So, yes. So, but we don't have a proposal in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have some, people have made some suggestions or talked about things. So yes, we know that there's building pressure for the village. And we know there's a lot of building pressure to the northwest of the village and to the south, especially the south of 38.
South of 38.
So we know the, the general areas where we're seeing the most pressure. And, and like, south of 38 is probably the hot, one of the highest pressures. Noticing that's, they, they, being other developers and other villages have come in and tried just like to Charles Plan, the most recent one. And then the two plans before that. So yes, we know that there's, there are pressures there to develop. So we are looking at that. And actually, the two charts behind you is a, of a current land use plan and a future land use map, which will be in the comprehensive plan. And if you'll notice below 38, there's kind of a blue, a light blue area. Yeah, so that's kind of the target area where we thought was a lot of pressure was going to be put. So we've kind of made that what's called a conservation neighborhood, which is a delineation of trying to use, similar to what the county would use, something like a 40% open space, 60%, you know, build what that, in theory, that general broad concept of protecting the, you know, natural resources like waterways, floodplains, all things. And trying to protect those and build away from those and not just like plow over them and put culverts in it and stuff. So we're trying to protect that stuff. So that blue, light blue area is what we're thinking about future. I think that answers your question, is the Plan Commission looking ahead? And that's one of the big places we are looking ahead, in the south of 38. And that's why we designated that area kind of the conservation neighborhood. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, well, this plan needs to be with the inside of proposed plans.
Yeah, so, well, yeah, well, we don't have any proposed, you know, anything in writing yet. So we have talk of proposed plans, but there's nothing in writing, so. But I understand your concern.
I think the intent was that if we had those areas designated as, what do you say? We call conservation neighborhoods. And then you look at the green infrastructure plan, which, you know, basically tells you what is protected for whether it's water resources or natural resources. You know, the direction is going to be for any developer that, because it's in our planning area, they are going to be subject to our input if they try to develop it in the county. And that if we object to it at the county level, then it forces a supermajority vote to get any approval. But the point is that in our comp plan, we've already set, you know, direction so there's precedent for anyone to come in, anyone who wants to come in, they have to be able to show that it's in compliance with our desires. Or they can annex and request changes, but then that's a different story. But it's, like I say, it's setting a, a direction for the planning areas.
Okay, great. Just state your name, I know your head, but just state for, for the record so they could, they can't see you on the video.
Yeah, of course, thank you, I'm Nick Botner. You just brought up a good point that sparked a question for myself. The ratio of open space to buildable. You had mentioned the county and you had used that, I believe, at least I'm reading into what you said, that you would use that as a template. Is there a ratio of open space to buildable or a suggested ratio in this comp plan?
There is a range, but it's, I just gave the counties, just that they, it's kind of a county has that number. I believe, I'm trying, I think I remember a number, but don't quote me on it. But I thought that was something like 35 to 50 or more. So there is a range, but it's a little bit broader and it's a little bit larger, actually. And it's not completely restricted by, you know, 40 to 50 or 40 to 45. I believe it's 35 to 50 or more. So that gives flexibility for requiring more, depending on what the natural landscaping is, too.
So I, I may have missed it, I've been kind of reading through the different variations of this over the last month. Long documents, of course, browsing. What, how did we narrate that idea in the comp plan? What you just described? I mean, what is our verbiage for that? And I guess what I'm getting at is that land south of 38, you know, over the last 20, 25 years, how many different proposals that there have been? And finally, now we're at a point, and I think we can use that history to kind of show what is going to be acceptable going forward. Finally, on that 900 acres, you know, we have 900 homes going in. And they're talking potentially, I mean, when you look at what's open space in the neighborhood plus the unbuildable, kind of the, I think, I'm not going to quote the acreage, but it was tonnage. But there were like 60, 65% possibly open space. But quite certainly 55, 60%. So I think just kind of looking at that and what is finally accepted, that if we did have something like that in our comp plan and actually defined what was acceptable, I think that would be really advantageous. Because this comp plan is talking about kind of creating a roadwork through 2045, I think was the number I saw. So we've got lots of generations and lots of administrations that are kind of come through.
Sure.
And I think in all these different decision-making processes, it's really good to have, to be able to avoid in the future having to spend time backpedaling when we've already kind of figured out what works. Like if we know right now this is acceptable, it's taken us decades to figure it out, like, let's have it documented. So I would just be curious to hear your feedback. And, and if we could have something like that documented in here.
Yeah, I believe there's a couple ways they've done it in the, in the, in the comp plan. I believe one is a building ratio, and I believe it's 0.75, and I believe that's in the comp plan. So if you have 10 acres and you have 10 homes, I think, you know, one acre home, I think, well, that doesn't work because it's, you can, you have to have maybe some wetlands or whatever that have to be protected. So there's like a ration, I believe it's 0.75, it's one building ratio. And I'll have to go back and look because it is a fairly lengthy document. But I believe it was something like 35 to 50 or more percentage. So that gives us a range to negotiate with. If you're doing something like a PUD annexation or something like that, then that's also part of negotiations, so that would give you some flexibility. And then each land is different. Some might be just, just a, a large percentage of unbuildable land that's, I'd say swamp, but just wetlands or, and others might have less of that, more buildable land and less of those sensitive areas.
I think my feedback would be the 35% number is concerning. The 35 to 50, the 50%, I think is, that sounds pretty reasonable. The 35% sounds concerning.
Yeah, so I, I have to go and check, I said, don't quote me on that, but I thought that just triggers my brain. But I'll take a look at that and then we'll...
Thank you for your time and all your work on this.
No problem. All right. Jim, did you have any other comments that you wanted to share about this at all? All right. If anybody have any other...
Oh, excuse me, there was. I think when people ask us what's different about, you know, this, the 2025 version, one of the issues that I think a lot of people had, even though we liked the, the 2012 plan, was that there was a, you know, sort of an urban tinge that was inserted by, you know, CMAP. And so a lot of their directions or suggestions were, you know, sort of...
CMAP-driven?
CMAP-driven, yeah.
Good point, yeah.
Instead of, you know, our community being semi-rural, they're looking at an urban environment. And so they would put in suggestions from their point of view. And even though it was sort of relevant, we took those, we took a lot of that bias out of this, this version as we went through and actually discussed what is really relevant today. Are each of these statements that, you know, the suggestions, the, while the, the eight, what do we call them? Yeah, the principles of, you know, the village in the, in this plan. You know, we took each of those and actually revisited it in terms of what is really applicable to Campden Hills as opposed to, you know, a broader, you know, area.
Or place closer into Chicago. A municipality that has more, you know, bigger city type thing, bigger city issues.
Yeah, yeah. So that was, again, one of the things that we, we felt cleaning up really helped change the, the attitude of the, of this version.
Okay. If there are no more questions, I'll take a last call for questions or comments. If there are no more, we're basically going to wrap this up. I hope you found this helpful to have a two-way conversation. But we're gonna take, we're gonna close the informational meeting. And then in approximately five minutes, we're gonna start the public hearing. And we'll allow all the commissioners to come in and then start the public hearing. And then if you do want to make more comments, you are more than welcome to come back up to the mic and make comments again, so. All right, thank you for coming and thank you for asking your questions. But feel free to stick around if you'd like. And we'll start shortly, all right? Thank you. Okay, we have a quorum, one, two, three, four, and I saw Jerry out there, too, so. All right, okay, uh, we do, we have one, two, three, four, uh-
Jerry.
Yeah, and Jerry's here as well, but we have four as a quorum, and, uh, we'll get Jerry to go, so, okay. All right, this is part two. Uh, let's see, well, this is the, uh, I'd like to call to order the agenda for the special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Village of Camden Hills on Thursday, May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five. It's currently six-thirty-five P M. All right, um, let's see, how about a, uh, roll call? So, Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Chairman Frederick is here, uh, Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Kopeck?
Here.
Com- uh, Commissioner, uh, Leario and Commissioner Teet are both absent, all right? And we also have a new, uh, commissioner, Commissioner McKelvey?
Yeah, here.
Here, and, all right, uh, very good. We do have a quorum. Uh, first thing I'd like to do is the motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission for April thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
All right, and a second? And by Mr. Anderson, first by Mr. Kopeck. Um, any discussions? I did not have any, uh, comments or corrections. If anybody else did have anything, please let me know. Having heard none, no corrections. Can I get a, uh, motion to approve as presented the, uh, minutes of, uh, thirty, April, twenty-twenty-five? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstention.
Abstention, all right. One, one abstention by Miss, Commissioner McKelvey. Uh, motion carries. All right, uh, let's see, moving on. Okay, item number four would be public comment, not related to the public hearing. So if you wanna talk about, anything else besides the comp plan, if you have something on your mind? Now's the time to speak. If not, we're gonna get to the public comments for the, uh, uh, comp plan. So I'm seeing nobody racing to the microphone, so I'm gonna say no public comments at this time. Oh, oh, very good. All right, uh, item number five, motion to open the public hearing concerning the draft update of the comprehensive plan. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Kopeck for a first, a second, Mr. Neil, uh, Anderson, a second, so. All right, um, if anybody would like to speak, we just have to have the, do you have sworn in to speak? Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. All those in favor to open, open the meeting, do they, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. All right, uh, swearing in of all who would like to speak regarding the public hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, just gonna raise your hand and the, uh, village attorney will just swear you in. Anybody like to make a comment at all or care to speak? Okay, uh, I saw I have no, no public comment, just going once, going twice? Okay, all right, uh, very good. Um, so let's see, swearing in of all the, uh, item number seven, public comment. So there is no public comment. And then, uh, motion to close the public hearing. Uh, I'm gonna hold off on that for just a second and, uh, have a brief discussion on some of the options and everything going, uh, in front of us at this time. So I know that I have, and I know that Commissioner Kopeck has also gone through it, uh, cover to cover, and made notations of corrections, uh, edits, primarily grammatical format, uh, and not really much of context. Uh, so those are, have been relayed to, um, uh, Mr. Brown, the, uh, Doge Administrator, not administrator, the, um, zoning officer. And, uh, so we can go through those and just let you know what they are, just very quickly, but he has those. The one thing that I found that, um, that troubles me and that I think it's gonna, um, we need to talk about briefly, is that this is the original, uh, comprehensive two thousand twelve plan that's up on, uh, that we're, that we're updating. And there's a couple of appendices in it. And one of the appendixes is appendix B. And appendix B basically is stormwater management. And we reference this appendix in the comprehensive plan. And, uh, however, uh, you, you just got a copy, the gentleman in the back got a copy of it. They probably noticed there's no appendix B.